Good evening. Our call to order, the January 20th, 2016 Planning and Zoning Meeting. First item on our agenda is our roll call.
Commissioner Teta.
Here.
Commissioner Polin.
Here.
Commissioner Kohler.
Here.
Commissioner Shernick.
Here.
Commissioner Height.
Here.
Commissioner Flagg.
Here.
Commissioner Bruno.
Here.
Councilmember Finley.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Communications from our Development Services Manager.
Nothing this evening.
Nothing. Next is Item Four, Public Invited to be Heard. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak about an item that is not on tonight's agenda, Jane is getting a list if anybody has signed up. And even if you didn't sign up, we're still excited to hear from you. So if you want, you can come forward to the podium and speak for five minutes. Let's see if... Seeing none, seeing nobody jumping up and racing up to the front, we'll close the Public Invited to be Heard. It's our first meeting of the year, so we need to do a little bit of housekeeping, so please bear with us. Our next item is to elect a Chairperson and also a Vice Chairperson. Let's take it one at a time. Are there any nominations? Oh, and just some ground rules. As we determined previously, one can nominate oneself. Okay. One can nominate full members of the Commission, but alternates, of course, would be... You know, doesn't make sense to nominate an alternate for these positions. And one can nominate somebody who is a full member but is not currently present at tonight's meeting. So, any nominations for Chair?
I'd like to nominate Michael Shernick. I think you've been doing a good job over the last year, year and a half, so...
Well, appreciate that. Thank you. Any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none, so let's go ahead and take a vote, but let's do it on paper so that we have private votes. Okay?
The vote is unanimous, seven to zero.
Well, thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate your confidence. I'll continue to try to run good meetings. So now we need to nominate and vote on a Chairperson. Any nominations?
Vice Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair. Commissioner Flagg, your light's not on. There you go.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Polin.
Okay, I have a nomination for Commissioner Polin. I would like to nominate Commissioner Goldberg. Any other nominations? Seeing none, let's have a vote on paper. You can abstain if you wish, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
The vote is five for Commissioner Polin and one for Commissioner Goldberg. So Commissioner Polin is the Vice Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Polin, congratulations. You're now the Vice Chair. You now actually need to switch seats with Commissioner Kohler. We'll do a little musical chairs here, so... Excellent. All right. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
You're ready, all right. Okay, we now have our Chair and our Vice Chair. Next is Item Six, Approval of the 2016 Meeting Schedule. Do I have any discussion on any issues with the meeting schedule? One thing I did want to point out is that we have to post where the meeting schedule is officially posted, and the last time it was updated was 1998. We now have a thing called the World Wide Web, and I thought it might be nice to officially add to our list of posting places the Longmont City website. Is there any discussion on that? No?
Have we not posted there already?
We are posted there, it's just not listed as one of our official posting places, so I wanted to make it official.
I would move to so amend.
Okay, Commissioner Height has moved to so amend. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Polin. Let's just take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor of approving our meeting schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of our bylaws. Any discussion or changes to the bylaws? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All in approval of our bylaws, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, meeting schedule, posting locations. Okay, I combined them into one item, so we'll skip Item Eight. Sorry about that. Move on to Item Nine, Approval of the Minutes from November 18, 2015 Meeting. Any discussion about the minutes? Seeing none. Anybody who is present at that meeting wish to move to approve?
I'll so move.
Moved by Commissioner Height, any second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Polin. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved, and we move on to Item Ten, which is the Murphy Express Limited Use Site Plan Variance from the 500-Foot Residential Protection Standard for Gasoline Automobile Service Stations and Exception from the Operational Standards for 24-Hour Operations with Planner Ben Ortiz. Thank you, Ben.
Chairman Shernick, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Ben Ortiz, planner in the Department of Planning and Development Services. As you noted, we'll be looking at the Murphy Express Limited Use Site Plan Variances to the 500-Foot Residential Protection Standard for Motor Vehicle Fueling Stations and Exception to the Operational Standards. The project is for a 16-Pump Murphy Express Fueling Station and 1,200-Square-Foot Convenience Store located in the southwest corner of Highway 66 and Main Street, as you see here in the aerial photo on your screen. Also included in the application is a variance to the 500-Foot Residential Protection Standard for Gasoline Automobile Service Stations. The project is approximately 58 feet from the residentially zoned lot to the southwest, which is a future site of the Crispin Drive Apartments, and this represents a 442-foot variance. The Land Development Code states that businesses with outdoor operations cannot operate after 10:00 PM and before 7:00 AM, which is applicable to motor vehicle fueling stations. The applicant is also requesting an exception to the operational standards so they can operate 24 hours. So the project is a redevelopment proposal of two existing properties. The first is the N-8 Pump Conoco Fueling Station and Convenience Store, and that is located right at the corner of 66 and Main Street. And the second is a 3,600-Square-Foot Retail Store that was constructed in 1950. The retail store is... It's currently vacant, but it was previously a liquor store. And you can see it here in the foreground in the upper left-hand photo of the Conoco Fueling Station, with a Conoco Fueling Station in the background. So we reviewed the application for various code requirements like parking, lighting, common open space, landscaping, signage, and scenic entry overlay standards, and the project meets or exceeds all the requirements. With the above said, the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to make a determination as to whether the variance to the 500-Foot Residential Protection Standard for Motor Vehicle Fueling Stations and the exception to the operational standard are justified. So we'll look at the variance first. The proposed Murphy Express will be 58 feet from the lot on which the Crispin Apartments will be located, and while the Murphy Express is larger than the existing Conoco in terms of the number of pumps, it really is a consolidation of two businesses into one with upgrades to meet the current code requirements. If you'll just give me a second here. So where the pointer is right now is the existing fuel canopy, and then this is the existing convenience store associated with the Conoco station. This yellow line here represents a lot line which will eventually be removed. They are currently replating the property to remove that lot line to consolidate the two lots into one. This is the 3,600-Square-Foot Convenience Store that was formerly a liquor store, it's currently vacant. This is the southwest corner of the future Murphy Lot, and this is the northeast corner of the Crispin Drive Apartments. That separation is roughly 258 feet.
Ben, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes, please.
I know it's a resubdivision, and we're combining two lots. Lot One, as I understand it, Lot One Block One, which is where the gas station is now, how far is it at its southwest corner from the northeast corner of the Crispin Apartment... Crispin Drive Apartment Lot? Do you know?
Chairman Shernick, Commissioner Height, if you'll give me a moment, I'll look at the plans we have here. I think I can gander a guess for you. My apologies. This particular plan doesn't show the existing lot lines. I needed to have the plat with me. Perhaps the applicant has better knowledge of that.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
I'm trying to pull it up on the assessment page. Get a general sense of how far away that is.
The applicant indicates that it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 205 to 110 feet. To mitigate the visual impacts on future adjacent residences, the applicants included a lot of screening in the form of trees and shrubs in the southwest corner of the site. They will screen car lights and trash enclosures. And the trash enclosure. They've also mitigated the lighting from cars parking by providing a low screening wall adjacent to the parking stalls, along with a row of Spartan Junipers and Spearmint Junipers immediately next to the parking area. In commercial zoning districts, light poles can be as high as 25 feet. Murphy Express has purposely lowered the lighting on the west side of the development to be no taller than 16 feet. The under-canopy lighting may be as high as 15 average maximum foot candles, and Murphy Express will be lowering the average maximum foot candles from 15 to 13.67 foot candles. And lastly, the proposed use is already present, as noted earlier, but it is outdated by virtue of the existing Conoco Station and Convenience Store, and the new Murphy Express would be an upgrade to the property. So the Planning and Zoning Commission also needs to make a determination about whether to permit the exception to the operational standard, restricting the hours of operations for outdoor activity to between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM in order to allow for a 24-hour operation. The Land Development Code states that outside activities shall not occur between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM unless the applicant demonstrates that the activity is compatible with the surrounding properties and neighborhood and submits evidence that such operations comply with the city's noise ordinance, and staff feels that the noise associated with the use would be negligible, especially given that this has been an existing Conoco station for... Well, since 1978, I think is when the building was originally constructed. As you can see in the photo, the Conoco pumps are presently automated, which is the industry standard these days, and does make it possible for motorists to presently purchase fuel on the site 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And this slide shows what the final product will look like, and the applicant did provide a color and materials board for the materials along the walls. Jane, would you mind passing that around, please? And as you know, in the scenic entry overlay, they are required to use natural materials such as stone and brick, and they've incorporated those natural materials into the facade of this facility. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending approval with conditions, on the condition that the applicant make any remaining staff requested changes to the plans as reflected in PZR 2016-1... To be, excuse me. Thank you, and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you have right now.
Thank you. Any questions for Ben Ortiz, our planner? Commissioner Flagg?
Mr. Ortiz, I'm wondering when... How far south are the pumps now located as relating to the edge of the apartments?
Commissioner Flagg, we're looking at that right now. I don't have an answer, but... From the pumps to the... To the apartments? To the edge of the property line? It's a little over 300 feet. What I did measure, however, the future Murphy Express Fueling Station canopy would be about 250 feet to the nearest corner of the nearest apartment, and that'll be touching roughly the northeast corner of the future Crispin Drive Apartments, so that'll be about... Roughly a distance of about 240, 250 feet.
Ben, I have a question for you. On Page Four of your report in Item Three, you say that staff believes that the redevelopment of this site with the variance and exception will be more compatible with the neighboring uses than the existing uses that are on the property today. Why more compatible?
Chairman Shernick, when we were looking at this project, and we were comparing it to the existing use... Or uses, I should say, one of which was built in 1950 and the other was built in 1978. The last major update to the city's land development code took place in roughly about 2000. We've had some updates since, which you've been a part of, but the major update was the early part of 2000, 2002. For that reason, this project will actually bring it up to current code standards, and so this is why we felt that it would be more compatible. Plus, they've done a significant amount of effort to screen the property, which the current properties don't have much in terms of screening.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Height?
Thanks. Mr. Ortiz, I got a couple of questions. My next question is, the 24-hour exception, is it to run what I would call a pump-only operation, or are they going to open the convenience store 24 hours a day, too?
Chairman Shernick, Commissioner Height, I will leave the second question to the applicant. I know that the current convenience store does close at 10:00 PM. The 24-hour operation is for the operation of the pumps, which will be accessible 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And the code requirement is... What we're asking of you is an exception versus a variance. And so an exception is a somewhat lower standard compared to a variance, and so just wanted you to be aware of that. But the applicant will be coming up and making a presentation demonstrating why they feel that it is compliant, or that exception should be waived.
And then my other question was... Sorry. On Page Seven, I think it's... You were subdivision C on Page Seven, which is... The safety standard, the 500-foot, as I understand it, 500-foot residential safety standard setback for gasoline stations, is that not a safety standard?
Commissioner Shernick, yeah, I suppose so, but we've never really seen any issues related to motor vehicle fueling stations in the city. I don't know their fuel tanks will be located on the very north end of the lot, so they'll be about as far away from the future residential as you can possibly make them.
So my thought, or what occurred to me, was a fueling station, there are accidents that sometimes do occur nearby. Do people drive off with the pump still in their car, or they fill a portable container, and there... And I think there are, it seems to me, fire or spark or explosion hazards. Is that not what this particular setback standard is meant to address?
Commissioner Height, yes, it's a very good question. And I would say that that probably is, in fact, accurate. No? Is it? It's... I apologize. I was corrected. The intent of that section was to address nuisance versus safety.
Commissioner Polin?
You brought up an interesting point. So what is the definition for the 24-hour operation of exception versus variance? What's the difference?
So an exception is you're just... You're basically just saying, it's okay, but the... You're not having to meet the... You're not having to meet the variance review criteria associated... That you would normally associate with a variance, which is... It creates a much higher standard. So it is just... Basically, you're... There is an unless in the code. It says, you know, if the code... Or if the applicant can demonstrate that it meets city's noise ordinances, then it's just a somewhat lower standard. But I can dig up the actual definition if you'd like, and... Or it seems like someone's way ahead of me, so I apologize for the fumbling.
Not that far ahead of you, Ben. I'm pulling up the code provision right now.
If I may, but generally variances relate to numeric standards. So it's usually for deviation of a numeric standard in excess of 20%.
So Commissioner Shernick, Commissioner Polin, the difference in my eyes is that here this exception is baked right into the code provision that creates the restriction in the first place. A variance says in general, if there is a need to diverge from any aspect of the code, then you have to meet all of these different criteria. But here we have a code provision that says outside activities shall not be conducted between the hours of 10:00 and 7:00, et cetera, unless the applicant demonstrates that the activity is compatible with the surrounding properties and neighborhood and submits evidence that such operations comply with the city noise standards. So to me, if the commission finds that the activity is compatible with the surrounding properties, et cetera, then that answers the question. It's still the applicant's burden of proof to convince you of that.
Ben, I have another question. We're going to go back to Section C on Page Seven, which Commissioner Height was asking about. So the decision-making body shall not grant a variance that may create a safety hazard, and you say that it's not applicable. City staff reviews revealed no safety hazards associated with the application. What types of hazards were reviewed by city staff? And specifically, I'm wondering if you looked at fuel leakage, runoff hazards, and also air pollution from VOCs?
Chairman Shernick, we didn't look at those latter types of issues, because those are really outside of our realm, namely, you know, evaporative emissions and things like that, which you would associate with a fueling station. Some of the things we looked at were lighting, actually internal circulation. One of the things we went back and forth with the applicant on was access, current access onto Highway 66, and the concern there was mainly how close it was to Main Street. And the applicant has agreed to move that particular access approximately 370 feet to the west, so that will give an appropriate acceleration, deceleration for people accessing the site or leaving the site off of Highway 66. So those were really kind of the things we were looking at. It was more things like lighting, circulation, that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you. Joni Marsh?
Chairman Shernick, I might add that for the commission's information, so our Fire Prevention Office also reviews all city applications, including all applications for gas stations to ensure that they're meeting our Hazard Materials Guidelines, making sure that they're removing tanks and doing the correct environmental review. So all of those things have taken place as part of this application through our Fire Prevention Office.
So just to clarify on that, so you just mentioned that there's correct environmental review, so that would cover VOCs, for example, that the station, the owners have to ensure that they're not going to be polluting the air to, say, like federal standards or city standards?
Chairman Shernick, so state and federal standards are not standards that the city enforces as part of their municipal code or adopted fire code, so those would be... We are looking at it from the city's adopted fire code perspective.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other... Commissioner Kohler?
So I noticed that it says that they're not going to be purchasing the property, but rather leasing it. If we were to grant a variance or an exception, does that run with the land? You know, if this changed hands 10 years from now, do they have to come back in front of us and...
Commissioner Kohler, yes, you're correct. It would run with the land.
Any other questions for Planner Ortiz?
I just have one, and that's...
Commissioner Bruno?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If hypothetically, if this deed is extended to another business there, and say it is... It's no longer going to... longer going to be a gas station with a convenience store, does that same exception, the 24-hour exception, does that, did they inherit that even though they're not the same sort of business, or?
Chairman. Hit your mic. Chairman Shernick, Commissioner Bruno, once the property's use changes, then any previously approved, things like the residential protection standard or variances are no longer applicable. And so any new conditions, any new code requirements would be applicable on that property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Height.
Ms. Marsh, is it appropriate for me to ask you questions? You had indicated, or at least I understood you had indicated, that the purpose of this particular setback regulation that I've now had the opportunity to look up was for nuisance purposes?
Chairman Shernick and Commissioner Height, at the time we adopted this code in 2001, this was a new provision that we hadn't had in the code before. And really, it was looking at those types of outdoor uses with lighting, noise, and other nuisance provisions, that abutting to neighborhood uses could cause increased code violation or concern from neighborhoods and calls to us. So that was really, I think, the intent and basis of putting in residential protection standards, which, again, weren't previously in place. So now we have a lot of uses in the city that were put into place without those. So this is a good example, where currently, there's a gas station there that was never subject to these standards, but now the replacement one is. So we've had this come up, I think, with the commission on a few occasions. But yeah, that was really the intent, was to take a look at those nuisances where code enforcement ends up getting calls and issuing notice of violations for problems that are affecting to neighbors. And again, I think that's also the reason that we adopted at that point in time the 24-hour use standards as well.
Any other questions? Commissioner Height.
Ben, I got to shift back to you now. Because I'm, well, obviously, I'm clearly struggling with this. As I read the requirement, we can't grant a variance that may cause a safety hazard? May this variance cause a safety hazard? It's my decision, but I'm forcing the question to you.
According to the criteria for variances, that would be correct. Maybe the city attorney would like to chime in on that, but I don't know if there is a tolerable limit for may. As I've noted, that we've not really had any safety-related issues with existing fueling stations in the city that I am aware of. So we kind of operate on that assumption that these are fairly safe these days. But I mean, I think there's always a level of risk regardless of the type of use that gets put into effect.
Any other questions at this time? Commissioner Kohler.
And maybe I missed this in the staff report, but this is catering to passenger vehicles, right? Not semi-trailers?
Chairman Shernick, Commissioner Kohler, I believe that the height of the fueling canopy would enable for, say, RVs to fill up at this particular location. I believe the applicant can speak to that more, but I do believe it is open to recreational vehicles as well.
Commissioner Pollan.
Getting back to C, because you say that city staff revealed no safety hazards. Is there a set list of safety hazards that the city reviews that our review criteria would be based off of?
Chairman Shernick, Commissioner Pollan, we don't have a list, but when we do go through our reviews of projects, we look, they're pretty exhaustive, and we look at a lot of different things. Again, one of them was access to and from the site, which is a very common issue and very, very, potentially a very hazardous situation if not done correctly. We looked at internal circulation, such as pedestrian access, and they've adequately provided that, along with pedestrian crosswalk markings, that sort of thing. So these are generally the physical types of things that you would normally associate with the business where, say, a pedestrian might access or a motor vehicle might access. And within our own abilities to kind of predict what may or may not be a safety hazard, we've tried to address those. Again, one of those was the access, the existing access onto Highway 66, which will ultimately be moved. But no, there is no list that we look at.
Okay. Is there a burning question? Because I would like to move on to the applicant's presentation. Commissioner Flake, did you have a burning question?
I can save it.
You can save it, okay. Shall we move on to the applicant's presentation, please?
Our address is 422 North Washington, Eldorado, Arkansas. We're pleased to be before you tonight. We look forward to doing business here in Longmont. You know, there are several questions that have been asked, and perhaps I can address some of those. We also have the engineers of record, Galloway and Company, here to answer any technical questions concerning this project. One that was asked by Commissioner Height that I might address, on the, there will be new pumps, and there will be new tanks. And I might note also, there are not 16 pumps, there are 16 fueling positions. There are eight pumps that are double-sided, and the tanks will be new. And there are two new tanks. They will have interstitial monitoring, leak detection, all the bells and whistles to detect anything like that. And the question that was asked, if someone drives off with the nozzle still in their tank, there's what's called a pop-off valve on these new dispensers. They're actually called dispensers nowadays instead of pumps. So when, in the unlikely event that someone were to drive off with that nozzle in their tank, once it pops off from the dispenser, it automatically shuts off. And whatever's contained in that hose is contained in that hose as well. And as far as our operational hours, we like to ask for 24 hours. Now, we like to have that option. Now, in some instances, there may not be anything going on in a community as far as business from midnight until 5:00 AM in the morning. And so if it's not, certainly, we would not be open during those hours. Historically, in a site like this, we would like to have operating hours 5:00 AM until midnight. And it's with the option of having 24 hours. But as I said, I almost have to believe that from after midnight to 5:00 AM in the morning, it may not be much going on. And plus, the pumps would not be, as we call, hot during that time. I believe fire marshal standards probably won't allow those pumps to be operational when the store is not open. But any other questions that you have as far as what we do, where we do it with Murphy, I stand ready to answer those. Otherwise, Jessica here with Galloway can answer any of the technical aspects of this project that you might have. But again, we appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight.
So is Ms. Good enough, is she presenting or just answering questions? Shall we go to Q and A? You're both, okay. So do you want to do your presentation now?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz, for your presentation. And I'd just like to say, it's been a pleasure to work with Mr. Ortiz through this process. We've really appreciated all of the support and help we've gotten from staff through this. We wanted to touch a little bit further on the residential setback variance that we're So our intent, Murphy Oil's intent, is to redevelop an existing fuel center and liquor store into a new fuel center while minimizing impacts to existing and future residential development, particularly to the west and southwest of the site. The city code section, we've already discussed that a little bit, but you can see it on your screens now. It requires for outdoor uses a minimum separation of 500 feet from schools, daycare centers, and residential uses or residentially-zoned property. As was also previously discussed, we believe that this code intent is to minimize impact to nearby schools, daycare centers, and residential areas, meaning light impact, audio impact, anything that could be considered a nuisance. As you can see on your screens, this is the existing site with the convenience store, gas station, and liquor store. The black line denotes the property boundary for the site. There is, right now, very minimal screening to the properties to the west and southwest. There's a direct line of sight to both of those buildings and uses. Our proposed buffer is a little bit more built up. As you can see, the black line, again, denotes our property line. We believe that this development is going to be beneficial to the neighborhood and to the city for several reasons. The existing buffer distance, and we've discussed the distances a little bit already, from the gas station, it will be a smaller distance. But from the liquor store property, we are increasing that distance from the proposed fuel canopy to the property line and to the future residential apartments to the southwest. The proposed use will not have any high audio impact activities, such as a car wash, vehicle repair, or vehicle maintenance. It's simply a gasoline sales and convenience sales facility. The Murphy development will increase the buffer distance. We are adding an additional landscape buffer along the west and southwest of the property to increase screening and decrease visual impact to those residential areas. We are adding a three-foot-tall knee wall along the west edge of the parking stalls to shield headlights from cars for those residential uses. The fueling area is located as far east as possible to maximize the distance from the residential development, while still maintaining the required scenic entry overlay buffer along Main Street, and maintaining safe vehicular travel paths on that side of the gas station. All lighting fixtures on the site will be full cutoff, and the lighting fixtures have been reduced to 16-foot mounting heights adjacent to the residential uses along the west and southwest of the property, which is a reduction from the 25-foot allowed by code. Again, as you can see, we have increased the amount of landscaping, increased the amount of screening, reduced the visual impact, and reduced the impact of lighting to the residential sites to the west and southwest from what is there today. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Okay, any questions for the applicants? Somebody, let's see, who's red? Where's the red?
I am now.
Oh, you're red now, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Flake.
Okay. For the applicant, you're going to be adjacent to, I think we approved, a three-story apartment complex in that area. And so how does your landscaping buffer the upper stories of that particular complex?
So the landscaping would not necessarily buffer the upper stories for that particular for those floors of the apartments. The canopy itself, the light fixtures are full cutoff, and the edge of the canopy fascia does extend down beyond the decking and the lighting as well to decrease any potential glare, even though they are full cutoff fixtures as well. So we are shielding the lights in that way. We are planting trees at a taller height than is typically advised, that you can typically buy them at a nursery. We're doing two feet taller than you can typically get them, is standard for a commercial development. So it'll start with a little bit more of a bolstered landscaping there. They'll start at an eight-to-10-foot height, and they will grow to, over several years, to a 12-to-40-foot height. So eventually, the landscaping would, but it would take five to 10 years to get to that height where it would fully screen the gas station for upper stories.
So does that mean you're not anticipating putting canopy trees in there that would be of a much higher heights?
Yes, we do have canopy trees, but they're not available to purchase and install at their fully mature heights. You have to, yeah, you have to grow them. So we are installing them slightly larger than is typical to help with that process and reduce the time for that. But they will grow, the larger trees that we are planting in that southwest corner will grow to a full, mature canopy height of 40 feet.
You also mentioned that you had looked at auditory issues on the site. So are your dispensers capable of functioning so that the upper, or the northern group, can function separately from the southern group? So that, for example, if the southern group of pumps, or dispensers, rather, are not operational during the time, the 24-hour clock, the northern ones could still be operational?
Yes. So dispensers nowadays, and I think this is why the terminology has shifted over the years, each dispenser used to have a pump inside of it that would pump gasoline. The pumps are now contained within the fueling tanks, on top of the fueling tanks, and the dispenser, and they pump to each dispenser. So the pumps would be up on the very north end of the property in the fueling tanks, rather than being on each individual dispenser.
So that, in effect, means that the southern group could be completely off during the hours of 10:00 till 7:00, and the northern ones could be completely functional?
I will let Wayne speak to that.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner, I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding what you're asking here. As far as having some on and some off, is that what you're asking? Yes, that would be possible, but it may not be very feasible.
Because?
Well, as far as stacking, for instance, if you've got, as you can see, there are four pumps on each side of the canopy there. If you were to block off the ones on the south end, I really don't see how that would benefit the city in just shutting those off. I believe that they could be turned off at that time, but as far as, you know, customer traffic and all, you're confining people to just that northern end. And we would look at that as a safety hazard, because if you've only got four, you've got everybody stacking up for just those four.
What kind of?
Can you hit your mic?
I'm sorry.
What kind of customer traffic are you expecting between the hours of, say, midnight and 6:00 AM?
We don't count cars, we count actual customer transactions. Just say as the Walgreens or the Walmart, we actually count customer transactions. It would be very difficult, unless you had someone sitting out there just actually counting cars. So we really don't know how many cars would come, because you could have someone come in, you could have four people come in in one car, and they come in and make four, six, or eight different transactions. So it looks like there might have been eight cars there, but there's actually only one car, but four people got out and made six or seven, eight different transactions. So we've never been able to quantify the number of cars that would come during a So we've never been able to quantify the number of cars that would come during a certain period of time.
So how would you? How would you, what does your market study show you as how many transactions you think will happen in that time period of midnight to, say, 6:00 a.m.?
And again, that depends on the locality and the traffic counts that are in that particular area. For 12 to 6:00, it's over a 24-hour, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, you could have, you could have 300 to 400 transactions during that time period.
And what is your normal transaction, say, count, market study-wise, per day without having 24 hours?
For a site such as this, you would be looking at 1,100 to 1,200 transactions during that time that would be open.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Collier.
Yeah, I'm a little curious about how the leasing is going to work. You know, if you were to buy this property, you would obviously inherit any environmental issues that were remaining, but just leasing it, you know, how would that work? If you guys go in there and replace the tanks, I assume you're putting in new tanks in, and you find any contamination, you know, how's that going to get cleaned up?
Commissioner, first to the leasing aspect. In many instances, we would like to buy property, but out here, as you, as all of you know, property probably has been in some families for 50, 100 years. And when you get into the real estate market, many people just aren't willing to sell, they're willing to lease. So that's what we're doing in this instance. We would have, on this particular property, a 20-year lease on the property, and of course we'd go in and do all the environmental testing and remediation and so forth if that was necessary.
And so you will be cleaning, you will be putting in new tanks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, there will be two new tanks in there, plus all the dispensers will be new as well.
And getting rid of the old tanks?
Oh, yes, of course.
I have a couple of questions for you. First off, in your presentation photo, there was a satellite image of the current site, and it showed a tanker truck parked in the empty lot to the west. So I think it's in the engineer's, yeah, there it is. See that tanker truck off to the west? Oops. So I take it that that maybe isn't so safe? So what are your plans in terms of, you know, tanker trucks coming into the property? And how will they travel? And would something like that be allowed?
Thank you Chairman Shernick. So this is kind of an interesting situation. What we gathered from our initial assessments of the property and multiple site visits is that trucks traveling along Highway 66 will pull off onto this empty lot and just park for a rest. It just seems to be a convenient stopping place along the road. That property to the west is ultimately going to be developed. I'm not sure quite on the timeframe with that, but we are coordinating with the owner right now, and that's why we have built that access road per their design parameters. I believe that will be another, a multifamily use, an apartment complex type use?
The property is actually zoned commercial, but commercial would accept multifamily residential. We don't know, we don't have exact details, however, as to what's going to be proposed at that location at this time.
Sorry, additionally, the truck seen here looks like it's a 67-foot delivery truck. That's more of the type of truck you would see going to a Walmart or a King Supers, Target, that sort of store. Murphy Express utilizes 50-foot trucks, so they would be about 17 feet shorter than that. And they would be coming in off of this, pull up the laser pointer, they would be coming in off of Highway 66 on the west side through the internal access road and offloading here. So it's a lot quicker path, it's a lot safer path, and that's going to be an asphalt road, a paved road, and that will be developed with this property.
Okay. Okay, so I have another question, too. In your letter from Galloway Engineering, you have some notes from the neighborhood meeting. And one of your bullet points, the residents expressed initial concern regarding increased traffic, et cetera, et cetera. Then halfway in the paragraph, how will the residents know if the existing tanks have leaked and contaminated the soil and the potential runoff from the site onto adjacent properties? And then you say, "All concerns were assuaged through the course of discussions with the neighbors," but you don't explain how. So assuage my concerns, please.
Of course. So we did conduct an environmental study on this site that included a standard overall environmental analysis, as well as a more in-depth analysis into both asbestos in the buildings and fuel contamination in the soil. There were traces of a former leak, and the site was listed as a leaky underground storage tank site back in the 90s when they were doing the cleanup. The EPA had implemented all of its new regulations and were doing the cleanup. The VOCs found in the soil were, they were very minimal, and they were kind of decomposed to the point, the organic compounds decompose over time, and they were to a point where it was evident that there were no leaks within the last, since that initial leak, and that they had come in and replaced the tanks at that time the existing gas station had. So with the Murphy Development, we will go in and we will be removing all of that soil. We will be conducting environmental tests during construction and post-construction to ensure that there was no further leakage on the soil and cleaning anything that we might find during construction. And fortunately, thanks to EPA regulations, state regulations, and local regulations, Murphy uses very sophisticated fuel product, fuel system products. Their tanks are double-wall fiberglass reinforced plastic with an air gap in between with interstitial monitoring that can monitor for leaks both from the outside into that, through that first wall, and from the inside of the tank through the inner wall. And that will automatically send a shutdown and notifications to the fuel center manager itself and to Murphy Corporate, and so they can take care of that immediately. It's very rare these days to see a leak in this type of sophisticated underground storage tank system.
Okay, another question for, Mr. Gibson, did you have something to add to that?
I just might add also, as Jessica said, not only do we have the monitoring system to detect any leaks or anything of that sort, but also the local terminal that we pull from also is tied into our system. So they're watching it as well as we are also.
Okay. So there's some redundancy in your system, okay. I had a question about your site plan in this regard as well. It appeared, I looked pretty closely at your grading plan, and it appears that where the tanks will be located, that the site grading is actually lower there in order, I mean, is that going to help with runoff? And also, I noticed on the site plan that there seems to be an underground leach field of some sort with sand, or can you explain this?
Yes. So per city requirements, as you all know, there was a new set of stormwater control requirements implemented by Drainage and Environmental Engineering at the city in the last year or so. So per that, the city now requires sites to treat any stormwater runoff for water quality. That means running it through a grass swale to take out contaminants or running it through a sand filter basin, and what happens with a sand filter basin, which is what we propose. The water will run through two grass swales to a sand filter basin where it will percolate into the sand. The sand will take out any contaminants, be it trash, dirt, mag chloride from snow removal, anything like that, and then the water will infiltrate back into the environment. We have, so the, on the site plan, the site generally, this line right here across the center of the kiosk is essentially the high point of the site. We want to keep water away from the building as much as possible. The water then flows on this portion of the site. Towards the tanks, there is a kind of a low point along the tank pad, and the tanks are graded up, so any water on the tanks will flow south, and then it will flow out to the west and to the east where you can see these two white channels. That's where the grass swales will go. It will route around to the sand filter basin, and then in the event of a large storm, there's an overflow channel that will be directed down here through the sidewalk chase and then onto Main Street to prevent any ponding or flooding in that tank area.
So how does the grading and the runoff work on the southern part of the site? Because the apartments that are to the southwest are even lower grade than where you're at.
So we have done our best to capture as much of the runoff as possible and treat it for water quality. This is, as it's an existing site with existing grades, and we have to meet things like ADA compliance and all that under the fuel canopy, we were somewhat restricted on this south end. It comes up at about 4% to 5% along the south end, and then we have routed what amounts to most of the southern portion of the fuel canopy. There's a little portion right here in the center that we were not able to route with our grading. This portion will be directed just south of the trash enclosure, south of this street, and run through a grass swale to be treated for water quality. This portion of the fuel canopy and dry aisle will run to the southeast and through a grass swale in between the sidewalk and the shrub there.
So I know it's imperfect, and it might even be a unfair question, but it is a neighborhood concern, and so it's a concern of mine. What, in your professional estimation, would be the likelihood of site runoff of fuel making its way to the residential developments to the southwest of your site?
I would say with runoff of fuel, just because of the high-tech equipment that Murphy Express uses and all of the safeguards that are in place on the site, really, the only potential these days for gasoline spills on a fueling facility are from human error, if somebody pulls it out, squeezes the nozzle, and spills it onto the ground. Even in that scenario, there are limitations when you use your credit card to pay at a fuel pump. It will stop you at 25 gallons. It will automatically turn it off. Even if you tied it and tried to let it keep running, it would stop you at a certain point. It's not necessarily a perfect system, but it's about as good as it can be while trying to accommodate for human error. That being said, since Murphy prefers to use a 24-hour attended facility with people inside at all times, that further minimizes the risk for human error or intentional harm to the gas station, because there is, there are employees inside watching that sort of activity and can put a stop to that versus an unintended fueling scenario.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, this is a public hearing item, and it's time to see if anybody in the audience would like to make comments. We have, nobody signed up, but is there anybody here who would like to come forward and speak to the commission? You're welcome to do so. I don't see anybody jumping forward. Oh, here we go. Sir, please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll need to press the button by the mic to turn on the red light, and you see three lights next to you. There's green, yellow, and red. Once you get a red light, I'll cut you off. Okay, please.
You will not get to that point. Sam Seifi, 1741 Creston Drive, Longmont. May I recommend to the commission, please, that not only for this site, but similar projects which will come in front of you for years to come, to ask the architecture for a 3D design where you can rotate it and you can view it from different views. So it will answer a lot of questions. For example, you had lighting questions, and what would happen to the trees? Well, you can see it immediately. By the way, I have no interest neither on this project nor in the 3D designs, so please, I'm here only as a non-interested party. So, and it really doesn't cost a lot. My business is electronics, which has nothing to do with this kind of things, and even with electronics, we use 3D drawings all the time. And then you can view it from different views, and it is quite convenient, and it is not expensive. Probably it might cost them a few hundred dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to come forward? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing section, and we'll go to discussion amongst the commission. Ben, can you put the microphone up there for us, please? It's causing us problems. Great. Commissioner Pollan.
So Ben, I have a question for you. Since there are potential development for the property to the west, if we go ahead and put this gas station in there, is that going to prevent certain uses of that land because it will be within so many feet of the pumps? Are we going to come across this again if they decide to put in apartments?
Chairman Shernick, Commissioner... Chair?
Janelle.
Chairman Shernick, Commissioner Pollan, no, no. So we don't have residential protection standards from residential. We only have residential protection standards to residential. So it would not, they would not be required to, for example, if they were to be an apartment complex, they would not be required to build that apartment complex 500 feet away. They would recognize that there is an existing use presently, and like the Crispin Drive Apartments, for example, which was within 500 feet of the existing Conoco fueling station, we did not factor in the existing Conoco fuel station in the decision-making for the Crispin Drive Apartments. So no, I mean, the short answer is it would not.
Any other questions, discussion? Commissioner Flay?
I guess I'm concerned about, even though we didn't factor that into the apartments that we did approve, there's a noise factor of the individual driver who comes to fill his tank at, say, 3:00 a.m. in the morning, gets off work, wants to come and fill the tank on the way home or whatever. I'm still not clear whether or not there's a possibility that 3:00 a.m. driver being able to get inside the convenience store and buying something. But I am concerned about the pumps on the south end. The way that the present fueling station, the Conoco, is organized is that the pumps appear to me to be to the northeast of the building, and so there is a buffer of sorts between the existing pumps and apartment buildings to the southwest of it. This one does not afford that. This one has pumps that are directly bearing on the apartment, and we assume that there may be children and others who need sleep in those apartment buildings, and my concern is that the noise issue of the southern pumps would be unbuffered.
Any other comments, thoughts? Commissioner Pollan.
Ben, what was the distance? Did you say you had a rough estimate for, from the pumps to the property line of the apartments, right?
When I looked at it in GIS, and this was rough, because I didn't have, I wasn't able to overlay the layer that they had over our GIS mapping. But I came in roughly around, from the very southern, south part of their canopy, to the northeast corner of the nearest apartment was, I calculated about 240 feet, 240, 250 feet. So the vast majority of the apartment complex would be, you know, outside of the normal 250-foot residential protection standard for, you know, other types of businesses like, you know, I don't know... like, you know, I don't know, uh, microbreweries with the tap room or something of that nature. But because this has the outdoor component, it does have the, the larger residential protection standard attached to it.
Commissioner Teta, Planner Ortiz, the exception would be to allow them to be open for 24 hours, am I right? And the applicant, I can clarify with them, but had said it, their preference to be present or only to have the pumps be operational when the, the convenience store is manned. There isn't any, anything else in between that could be done. We either grant that exception and allow them 24 access and they get to decide whether or not to keep the convenience store manned between, say, 12 and 5:00 AM and have the pumps be operational or not based on, on business. Is that right?
Chairman Shernick, Commissioner Teta, I believe you, you, this body, if you so desire, may attach conditions to the approvals, which could be hours of operation if, if that's a direction that the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to go.
Other thoughts? Commissioner Kohler.
I guess I would just maybe like us to consider the fact that, yeah, no members of the public from that apartment complex showed up in opposition to the project. It sounds like they had a community meeting and, and their issues were resolved. So I think we just need to consider that before we maybe impose any restrictions on a business unnecessarily.
Go ahead, Commissioner Height.
We just approved the, um, the land use request to build those apartments in November. So they haven't even broken ground on that apartment complex.
But there is a neighborhood to the west of the apartments. We just, yeah, further west of, of what we just approved and none of them are here tonight.
And.
And that's Commissioner Kohler's point.
And the developers of the apartments know that there's the current, I mean, maybe the pumps are a little bit further away, but they know the current use, which is pretty close to what's, what's being proposed. So they kind of knew what they were getting into when they were, when they chose the location for the apartments.
Right. But on the flip side, I also initially bristled with the idea that, that we're being asked to put a, a larger gas station in next to a location which we just approved some affordable housing. You know, I, I, I struggled with the idea that, that, oh, okay, well, Longmont's going to put the affordable housing in, in like the, the, the bad locations, you know, next to, next to, you know, air pollution, for example. But, but hearing what I've heard from the applicants, there, there's so much more technology involved now. My, my concerns are allayed to a great deal, maybe not entirely gone, but allayed. Commissioner Kohler.
Yeah, and I, I, I think that this seems like this might actually be an improvement to the site. I mean, I'm sure everyone knows that gas station is pretty rundown, the building being vacant next to it. It sounds like the technology with the gas tanks is actually going to improve. I think the look will definitely improve. I'm, I'm not sure it's going to be a negative impact to the, that area.
Commissioner Flay?
I guess my.
Oh, oh, whoops, I'm sorry, I miscalled Commissioner Bruno before you.
Okay. I agree with Commissioner Kohler and the fact that, that the site in general is, it seems to be, it's, it's going to be an improvement as far as safety, standards, that sort of thing. I don't know how much weight the rest of you put to this, but I do feel that because neither of these apartment complexes have actually been constructed, the future residents can sort of make a determination themselves. You know, if they want to be that close to that sort of a thing, it's not like they're already there and the gas station will move in and sort of force itself upon them.
Commissioner Flay?
I guess my concern is that we are the commission and we can act as their voices a little bit, and maybe we should. After all, as Commissioner Shernick says, we tend to put affordable housing in a less than advantageous position, a less advantageous site. My thought is that with this modern technology and based on the amount of business that is thought to be generated between, say, midnight and 5:00 AM, it seems to me that it wouldn't be inappropriate to say, sure, open the northern pumps north of the building for as many hours as you like, close down the other ones between, say, 11:00 and 6:00, so that you aren't impacting negatively because noise does carry. And many vehicles in the dead of night are going to sound much larger, louder than they would otherwise when you have other noise that's going on around them. I know that such noise can be kind of an annoyance to people who are trying to sleep, trying to have a life. And I think that affordable housing shouldn't be, oh, well, they know what they were getting into, kind of a thing. Sometimes there isn't that kind of range of choice for people who are living in affordable housing. I think we have a poss, we have a, a chance here to be their advocate. Maybe that's what our role should be in this situation.
Commissioner Flay, I, I'm going to jump in and, and ask how shutting off the southern pumps overnight would reduce the noise when there, when one of the exits and entrances is off of Main, Main Street on the southern end of their site? So you'd get, you'd be getting a lot of cars going through there anyway.
Well, you would be getting cars going through, but you wouldn't have one stationary sharing their music with the world. On the northern side, you'd still have the possibility of the building doing some additional bumpering, and then you'd also have additional distance from the complex. Now, yes, if they build multifamily across the way to the west, that's still less noise if you have it in just the northern area.
Okay. Any other comments, thoughts? Anybody itching to make a motion? Commissioner Pollan?
Yes. Commissioner Height, because you're, you're kind of in on this, you're kind of big on page seven, section C.
I got a better citation for you if you wanted. It's the variance provision of our code.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry, it's the various provision of our code, which is statutorily found at, if I can get it to you, section 15.02.050J, which Ben Ortiz has quoted for us in fairly substantive portions when he, on pages five through seven, which outlined the various different components that we need to find or met or can't be met in order to grant a variance. And I, and, and I'm looking through them and, and struggling to, to make this work. I'm, I'm closed. The safety issue concerns me and I'll stop.
Okay. So here's, here's my thoughts on the safety issue. Because if, and I hate to get technical on this, but technically we are not, he is not creating a safety hazard, but safety hazard actually already exists. And truth be told, I would actually say that given the newer safety standards, that it's actually going to make that property more safe than keeping the current gas station there.
I'll jump in and remind us what Development Services Manager Marsh pointed out, that this has gone through our fire department's review as well in terms of safety. And I know they're much more expert than I will ever be on those issues. So that assures me to some degree as well. Commissioner Kohler.
I, I don't completely understand, I guess, the difference between the PRZ or PZR-1C, B, and A.
Yes, and, and Ben, you made a statement while we're, let's talk the technicalities of the PZRs. You made a statement in your initial presentation that we were approving PZR-2016-1 or, or deciding PZR-2016-1. That's what we have in our packet, but then you corrected yourself to say two. But what's in our packet is one.
My apologies, yes. I, I was thinking of the, the second PZR, which normally allows you to, to look at, at approving a project with conditions. And so actually I misspoke, it is actually 1B. And that would be correct.
So can you, to Commissioner Kohler's point, in 1B, what is being proposed by you is that we're laying the condition on the applicant that they would comply with all further future city staff requests until their project were, was done or something to that nature.
Chairman Shernick, that's correct. We've gone through a couple rounds of review on this project, but we're still not complete with the review. We still need to do, I would say, at least one more. And so given that, that the review isn't, isn't 100% complete, we're looking at the fine details now, kind of clean up, clean up, clean up any remaining items that need, need to be addressed. We, we want to ensure that we, we have that ability through your, your decision.
And can you give us an idea of what some of those fine details might entail?
Well, there's some remaining landscaping issues there, working out some details with their detention pond still, and so, so things of that nature. But there's nothing really big. It's just.
Okay. You just need a little, little leeway, a little more time is, is what that PZR is about. Does that help Commissioner Kohler?
It does.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? Any, Commissioner Kohler?
So I guess I move to take a vote to approve PZR-2016-1B.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve PZR-2016-1B. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Pollan, we will take a vote unless there's any further discussion. Okay, and the vote is six to one with Commissioner Flay dissenting. So this item now enters a seven-day appeal period. During this time, any aggrieved party may appeal the commission's decision by submitting a written appeal letter stating why the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision should be amended or reversed by city council. All appeals must be in writing and must be received in the city clerk's office and the planning office within the seven-day appeal period. The appeal period begins Thursday, January 21 at 8:00 AM, ends Wednesday, January 27 at 5:00 PM. Ben, I would like to thank you very much for your presentation. Thanks to the applicants, thank you very much. And we will move on with the rest of our business. Thank you.
Let me get back to my, there we go.
And I understand that item 11 springs at Sandstone Ranch has been removed from our agenda, correct?
Chairman Shernick, that is correct. There is a noticing deficiency per our Land Development Code and state statute as it pertains to mineral rights and a 30-day notice, which did not occur. So we were, will not review this item this evening, but we will get it back on the agenda. My understanding is the applicant has corrected that error and is moving forward.
Thank you very much. Okay, final call, public invited to be heard. If there's somebody in the public, let's see, we don't have a signup list for this one, do we, Jane? Anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward? He's putting on his coat, so I, I think not. Okay, all right. He's waving goodbye. We'll close, the public invited to be heard. Any items from the commission? Seeing none? Items from Council Representative Bonnie Finley?
Not a thing.
Not a thing, okay. Item, items from the Development Services Manager Jenny Marsh?
So just a couple of things. So as I mentioned at our pre-session, it looks likely that we will actually have two meetings in February, both the third and the fourth Wednesday. I will make sure there's air conditioning for both meetings. And then also, I think Jane put a flyer at your desk for a Building a Better City presentation that will be taking place next Wednesday at the museum. I think it, believe, believe it starts at four. Interesting discussion about downtowns and density, so some of the things that we're talking about with Envision. It is a free event and so we'd love to have you guys come and listen to Joe Manicuzzi, great speaker, and lots of great ways to put downtowns into action. So I'd invite you guys to all make it if you can.
Great, thank you very much. So our last item is adjournment. If nobody is opposed, we will be adjourned. Thank you very much.